Hello, hello everyone. Alright, so I think most folks who need to be connected are connected. And so we will call the meeting to order. It's seven o'clock, so thanks everyone for being with us this evening. I'd like to begin our meeting this evening by asking if there are any items to add to the agenda.
I have, I have one quick one, I guess if we can edit it just the. I don't even know if it's going to be a review of the. The dog catcher policy or just kind of a maybe in an informal question for the dog catcher policy, maybe that our CEO might know the answer, he can find out for me.
Okay, so dog catcher policy. So. Could I have you an indication of consent on that, please raise your hand? Okay, unanimous consent. Counselor Sampson, did you have something else?
Yeah, I can, I'd like to have a brief discussion on the. Two thousand seventeen organizational review. I want to go too deep into anything, I know we have an agenda tonight, so but just looking to have some kind of. Discussion in the future, right, when it comes to this review.
Okay. Um. So could I have a show of hands for consent to add two thousand seventeen organizational review to the agenda?
I don't know, that's probably something we should have some. Free information on, right, as to what we're discussing.
Yeah.
Yeah, just say, I, I, I think Brent, we need now, now that. Now that the bargaining agreement is over the way and that I think we, we need to better understand. This is a, this is a live document on our website, right, so. We got a better understand as a team, like what was adopted, what wasn't, you know, so. Yeah, for me, I'm not comfortable with, with what's in there, right, not knowing what was adopted or approved. So I just want, want to have a conversation on it, right?
Okay, I'm wondering, Counselor Sampson, if we could though begin that discussion, maybe with a conversation of. Just running through with staff first and then, and then bring it back to council, you know, if once we have that. Because I'm like, I'm not sure that we'd be prepared or that staff would be prepared to go through, is that what you mean, piece by piece, to understand what's.
No, 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 not tonight, I just wanted to bring it forward to council to make sure that in the future we, we. We have a, you know, a meeting in a public setting to discuss all this stuff, right, so yeah, we can, we can hold off and, and. And discuss it, but yeah, I think we, we need to better understand everything that's in that organizational review.
Okay, so, so then maybe we'll hold off on that one. For now. And we root with staff first. So, okay. Okay, I had an item to add as well, I sent to you to counselors earlier today, it was accessibility plan correspondence, and my apologies for the lateness. Of adding that to the agenda, but it came up as a result of kind of Friday afternoon accessibility meeting, so. Could I have consent to add accessibility plan correspondence to the agenda, please?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any other additions? Okay, so could I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson, can I have a second or please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilor, or sorry Deputy Warden, Bonnie Sampson. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion is carried. So next is a review of minutes from December sixth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Last year, I guess we can say, those minutes were circulated in advance with your meeting package, has anybody noted any errors or omissions from those minutes? Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson, could I have a second or?
Make the motion.
Thanks, Counselor Diddon. Any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, that, those opposed, alright, that motion is carried, thanks so much. So we have some guests with us today, so welcome everyone, and I want to say happy new year to everybody on the call, and for those who might be viewing later. It's January twenty twenty two and a whole new year and feels a little bit like Groundhog Day because we're still in a virtual setting. We're still having to operate within the confines of COVID, but really, really pleased to welcome you all here. This evening, so maybe I will hand it over to the team from the Cape Breton Regional Hospital Foundation for your presentation, so thank you for being here.
Great, I can probably start, thank you very much, I. I'm Paula McNeil, I'm the CEO for the Cape Breton Regional Hospital Foundation and on behalf of our, our organization and our group, I want to thank you very much for giving us time to. Present to the council this evening on a cause that we're very, very passionate about. Yvonne contacted us to provide a, our presentation, so I think you should all have a copy of that. And that's what we're going to speak to. So we're going to talk tonight about, give you a quick overview of the Cape Breton Regional Hospital Foundation. We're going to talk specifically about cancer care within the Eastern Zone of Nova Scotia Health. And we're also going to talk about the cancer care here at home campaign, which we're pretty passionate about. So let me start by introducing. The group of gentlemen who have joined me this evening. We have Mike Mcfee is, is on the, on the call, so Mike is originally, of course, from River Bourgeois, his folks still live there. Sorry, what's that?
Do you have Paula?
Yes.
If you want to share your presentation.
Yep.
Would you like me to put it up or?
No, I'm gonna, did you guys, can you guys?
Yeah, I gave you, yeah, okay, perfect.
Yeah, you gave me permission, great, I wasn't sure if.
Okay, thanks.
Great, so. So I think I talked that we would do the, the introductions, then meet the Regional Hospital Foundation and talk about cancer care specifically in the Eastern Zone of Nova Scotia Health. And then the cancer care here at home campaign. So Mike Mcfee, originally from River Bourgeois, and his folks still live there. He now lives in Saint Margaret's Bay outside of Halifax, he's a senior financial advisor with RBC Wealth Management. And he may be perhaps. Best well-known for winning the Stanley Cup as the assistant captain with the Montreal Canadiens. And he's the chair of the Cancer Care Here at Home Campaign. Dr. Rex Dunn is a well-known surgeon, he has more than forty years' experience. Being a surgeon in the Eastern Zone of Nova Scotia Health, he also has held several leadership roles. Including being the chief of staff and also the involved with recruitment and the vice president of medicine for what was the Cape Breton District Health Authority, I think that was back in two thousand and seventeen. He's a sailor and an all-around great guy, and he's a member of our campaign cabinet for the Cancer Care Here at Home Campaign. And Bob McCackren, Bob's originally from Judic, but he calls Port Hoxbury home, he's the owner of Maple Signs and Engraving. And King Mac Property Limited, people know him for his broadcasting career with the HOP radio station that him and his wife. Owned up until a few years ago, he's also a member of our campaign cabinet as well, and I have to add too, he's a huge HABs fan, so. Which, which goes really well when your chair is. Was with the Montreal Canadiens. So in the interest of time, I will quickly tell you about the Cape Breton Regional Hospital Foundation. It was established back in nineteen eighty-five by a group of volunteers. They were lobbying so that the, the area could have a regional center for health, which eventually became the Cape Breton Regional Hospital. Cape Breton Regional Hospital gets more than six hundred thousand visits in a year, so it's, it's certainly well utilized by the island. And the people of the Eastern Zone of Nova Scotia Health. It gives, the Regional Hospital Foundation gives about fifty-five million dollars a year to support the healthcare needs of the, of the hospital. Everything from the small to the large, large being equipment, small things, making sure people, for example, from Richmond County have the. Transportation needs met so that they can attend the Cape Breton Cancer Center that's located here at the regional. And there's about one point five million a year that's dispersed to people for those particular needs. I'm going to hand it over now to our committee member, Bob McCackren.
Thanks very much Paula, good to see you all on the, on the line here this evening and a happy new year to you. The, the story about Cape Breton and cancer is one that many of you know, to start with, the Cancer Center that we currently enjoy and supports the community. Is, was established in ninety-eight, opened in ninety-eight. And the original idea was for it to service about fifteen thousand visits per year, well, that's grown over the last twenty-plus years to forty-five thousand visits, so that's why we're here today. In that we've got a new cancer center being established in connection with the Cape Breton Regional Hospital. Unfortunately, Cape Breton has some of the highest rates of cancer in the country, and we feel that. Connected to that is the rates of poverty in the country, in the, in Cape Breton in relation to the country, that it's extremely high, but I know that the folks on the, on the line and. And on council would be very familiar with that as well. One thing we note that Cape Bretoners present at later stages in diagnosis when it comes to cancer, Rex will probably talk a little bit about that. Later in the, in the presentation. And of course, the other piece that's connected to cancer care and, and people who are seeking. You know, support around their cancer diagnosis is an aging population. So all of those things kind of come together to present somewhat of a, a challenge to Cape Breton. And we feel that part of the answer at least is this new Cape Breton Cancer Care Center that will be open, you know, within. A reasonable amount of time, so we're kind of, I guess our team is gearing up for that. For that eventuality. And I think, is it Rex who's jumping in next?
Actually, I think it's going to be Mike Mcfee who's going to jump in next.
Okay, great.
We, we can't hear you, Mike. Can see it's, he's not muted, but there's some sound issue going on there.
Maybe he's baffled out by some Toronto cheering.
Does definitely know what's happening.
May, maybe his volume might be like way down, check your volume, Mike.
Not that I can speak for Mike, but I can certainly jump in, Mike, you want me to jump in? That's, we can't hear you. Yeah, I think, I think I'll jump, jump in and then maybe you can keep trying, sorry. So as, as Bob has mentioned, cancer numbers are quite high in the, the Eastern Zone of Nova Scotia Health, so. The Cape Breton Cancer Center actually serves Cape Breton Island, but it also goes as far as Geisborough and Antikinesian, we actually, some people see some people from New Glasgow who come to the Cancer Center. So Bob talked about the numbers, so because of these numbers, the new Cape Breton Cancer Center is being built. And the Cape Breton Regional Hospital Foundation has launched a ten million dollar campaign that will support the, the new Cape Breton Cancer Center. So with that, that campaign is called. Stronger Together Here at Home. It's, it's the. The. Cancer Care Here at Home Campaign, and so Mike is chairing that particular campaign, he's also joined by Rex and Bob who are with us here today. Other members of the cabinet would include honorary chair, who's Chief Terry Powell, who's well-known nationally, of course, as the chief of Member Two First Nations Community. George Unsworth, who is an accountant here in Sydney area, he had, of course, Unsworth Cachuvanus for many years. And Dwight Rutterham, who is a past chair of the board for the Cape, Cape Breton Regional Hospital Foundation, and Dwight is the, he's a lawyer with Breton Law. A lady by the name of Catherine Van Nostrom, so Catherine is, her and her husband Steve have Celtic cabota here in Sydney. And then Martha Van Zoftin Campbell, so Martha is, of course, part of the Van Zoftin family and, and known for that, so we have representation on the. On the campaign cabinet from across the island. Now I'm going to turn it over to, to my. My colleague on the campaign cabinet, to Dr. Rex Dunn, to tell you about the causes.
I thank you Paula, I think that in your materials, I hope you have a list of. Not only the programs, which are very important, one being the complementary therapies, exercise, the patient care fund, which is so important. And another big one is the research and innovation, which. Is very important because we are the only, the second center in, in Nova Scotia that can carry out this work. It's amazing how many studies are going on now and where this could take us. My role really is to talk about vital equipment. And I can tell you, this is a very exciting time for us, never in my lifetime, not here, have I seen such enthusiasm, and it's all around this tremendous. Initiative to build of what's already underway up there at the regional site, I thought it was a big deal when they put in the Cancer Center about twenty-five years ago, that we'd never need anything more than that, we had two in our, it's over, it's wow, state of the art. But guess what, and over time, things change. The. Technology never stops being improved, so you do tend to get defined, so this is an opportunity now for us to try to. Make sure we can offer everything reasonable here in Cape Breton at the highest standard, so with that in mind, we look at the little list there. And I don't know if you have the same list as me, but just, I'll just read a couple off and I'll do it quickly. There's a variant identified guidance system, this is tacked on to our radio therapy unit. So it's a cutting edge of technology that allows even more precise. Aiming of the beams and therefore more precise treatment, and I must say that. It's, there's not a lot of these around, but if we had one, this would take us right up to the very latest that's available. The echocardiogram machine that's on my list here is widely used machine for many things, but also for cancer patients to determine whether they're able to take the treatment or not. Gamma camera, we've had for years, but ours has pretty well had the biscuit, it's old, it has to be replaced, and it's essential. For staging cancers amongst other things, but a very important tool for that. And I'm happy to say that the foundation has already made sure that this one in particular is going to happen. Image-guided sinus surgery system, that was a new one to me, I must say, but we have a couple of talented young ENT surgeons now in Cape Breton. And this particular piece of equipment. Is a tiny little CAT scan machine that allows you to see way up inside the sinus, it's a very difficult place to pick up a cancer, they're not common, but. If you don't have equipment like this, you certainly couldn't treat it very well. And they're keen to have this and get on with their work. Radio frequency ablation generator, this is a way of treating sometimes primary cancers, but also a number of localized metastatic cancers by putting a hot little wire right in the center. And basically. Frying that tumor without affecting its surrounding tissue, so that's, that's part of the equipment, you also need very good imaging equipment. We also have. Couple of other big ones on, on the line, we're hoping that we can look at an interventional radiology room. We have them now, but they, they need to be upgraded, time as I say goes on. And when you think about trips to Halifax, it could be avoided for cancer patients, a particular pet project of mine is thoracic surgery, we should do. That particular can, cancer care here, but that ceased a few years ago, and so all of those patients, for all of their workup. Pretty much have to go to Halifax and much of it could be done here, so we're hoping to, to support that. And there are a couple of others. Items that we will be getting to, it's a long list, really, when you think about it. But those are the kind of things that we have talked to our local experts about, and all of them would be very useful, so these are the kind of things that we're going to. Hopefully be able to finance with our, with our campaign, thanks. I'm happy to answer any questions on these things. Anyone?
I do, I have one question.
Sure.
And on your list, on your wish, wish list of equipment, what about a PET scan, so those right now I think are only available in Halifax, right, is that something you're?
Right on the mark there, and I'll let Paula pipe in there too, too, that's been our number one goal, and we've offered to pay for one. But we haven't yet got final approval to actually do that, so I'll let Paula speak to that, she's been working on this very hard, we all have in our own way, but Paula is right up to date, so Paula, would you answer that one?
Sure, I can jump in, and I think, Mike, did you join by telephone?
I am now on by telephone, and I just wanted to say that I could see and hear everybody, so I heard the Toronto Maple Leaf joke. Not sure who it was, was Sean or Michael?
We're not going to, we're not going to invite them to the next meeting.
So I, I, I really, I really apologize, guys. This is the first time I. I've got a firm computer, it's the first time I've been allowed on Zoom, and I guess I didn't set it up properly, so my, my apologies.
No worries. So to.
Maybe I'll let Paula, Paula can, yeah, maybe Paula, you can talk a little bit about the PET CT scanner, which as Rex said, it's something we've been working very hard on. And then maybe I can jump in since I missed my part, maybe sum up a little bit, Paula?
Sure, yeah, so with the, with, when you raise money for anything for Nova Scotia Health, it stands to reason, of course, that you have to get permissions. They want to make sure that, you know, it is equipment that is necessary, or that there's not any other costs that are associated with that equipment that would, that would not be reasonable, so. Everything that we've listed on the list, we've worked with, you know, with Dr. X Dunn, Dr. Elwood McMullin, the, who's the, who would be the head of. The head of the redevelopment for the, for the Cancer Center to, and, and the executive director Brett McDougall for the zone to get permissions for everything that's on the list. And one of the things, Melanie, that's on our list is a PET CT scanner, so the whole point of this campaign is that we don't want people to have to travel five hours. To get cancer care, it's, people are at their most vulnerable point in their life, and it is, we see people, they're either too sick to travel, they don't have. The wherewithal to be able to navigate in Halifax, and we quite frankly see people who have limited means and they just can't afford to travel. So we've been lobbying very hard to get a PET CT scanner, we've actually had some really great conversations with Nova Scotia Health. In particular with the new interim CEO Karen Oldfield, the new premier is, is seeming very much like he's on side with the, with the PET CT scanner, so. We're navigating our way through that now, but lobbying pretty hard because that's something that we want. Do you have anything to add to that, Mike?
No, I, I, I think, I think. I think we remain very, very positive that we're going to get final approval, that's really all we can say until we get final approval, but that was a good question, it's a question we get. Quite often, PET CT scanner is, as Rex said, it's right on top of our list, so we're, we're very hopeful that we're going to get approval short-term here for that. Very important piece of equipment.
To add on to that, it's ironic in a way that previous government had actually approved that, but unfortunately. With the elections. We are very hopeful.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of things have happened, we've had an election, we've had Nova Scotia Health to completely revamp themselves, so it's been, so maybe I'll jump in, Paula. I know we only have limited time, so I'll try and be, try and be quick. From, from a cancer point of view, as Bob was saying, the numbers, you know, are worse for, worse for Cape Breton than the rest of the country, and most of the provinces anyways, and we all have a story on. Stories about cancer and how it's affected our family and friends, and some good stories as well, my father and my, my wife's father, both are cancer survivors. However, you know, we lost, I lost a brother-in-law, fifty-six years old, of cancer, about a year and a half ago, and, and it goes on and on, so, so we, I think we know. In K, as Cape Bretoners, the need for this Cancer Care Center, one of the things that. One of our focuses, besides obviously having better care for Cape Bretoners and saving lives and, you know, the, the ultimate goal, one of our number one objectives is to have more care at home, and that's. Our campaign name is Cancer Care Here, Here at Home, so we're trying to make it so, as Paula said, it's, it's hard to travel to Halifax for treatment, some people don't have the wherewithal. To travel, and you don't have the support of your family and friends if you do that at a time like this, when your world's turned upside down, that's, that's very important, so. So care at home is, with all these, these three areas that Rex talked about, that's probably our number one objective, to get more of that high-quality care at home. The one thing we know about Cape Bretoners is that they help each other, and you know, is, we see that all the time, we see it, I always reference Christmas adies, when we're looking at how. How Cape Bretoners support versus, you know, other, other provinces in mainland Nova Scotia, so we definitely punch above our weight, and we're, we know that Cape Bretoners are going to get, get behind this. Paula talked about our team, we also have, you know, besides our cabinet, we have advisors on the side that are helping. Names like Annette Bershier and Joe Shannon, Stuart McLeod, names you would all recognize, they're there for us and have, have been helping us in any way they, they can. As far as campaign, we launched in November, we started back in, we, we cabinet came together in last January, but we've been going through. A lot of what we just talked about with the getting our wish list together, we have had a great start, we're at around five point five million of ten million, so it's been a really good start for the last couple of months, but. The last half is always the toughest. Richmond County, obviously, uses the Cancer Care Center, and that's why we're here today to try and get your support. There are, our numbers show that in the last full fiscal year, there were a hundred and sixty-one unique patients to the Cancer Care Center in Sydney. So each of those patients obviously would, would travel to Sydney for treatments and, and. And monitoring more than one time, our numbers show probably an average of fourteen times, so over two thousand visits by people in Richmond County in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Richmond County has been a good giver of the foundation in the past, this being our largest campaign ever at, at ten million. We really would like to have your support, we're, we, we don't like to throw numbers out, but we're often, we're often asked in the, for, maybe for your information, well, we're looking. We're looking, we're hoping, I guess, for something in the range of a hundred thousand, that's what we would, would hope Richmond County would be able to, to help us with the campaign. So I'm going to leave it there, I think we've told you about the campaign, where we are, and, and maybe. Due to time constraints, we'll just open it up to questions from the floor.
Thank you so much, Mike. I'm glad you moved to work out the, the technical issues to join us, so any questions from council for the Hospital Foundation team with us tonight? Alright, I think, I know for me, I'm, I'm a little struck by that number, so a hundred and sixty-one patients from Richmond County in fiscal twenty-one, is that what, is that what I heard?
A hundred and sixty-one, correct.
That's an incredible number, so it's a huge amount of people from our tiny little county, so. Yeah, so I'll be adjusting that number for a little while, but thank you for sharing it. Yeah, so I'll be adjusting that number for a little while, but thank you for sharing it. Um and I I think you're right, Mike, um you know, um I don't think there's any one of us here that hasn't either been personally touched. Or our family or our friends by cancer and had the support of the uh of the of the Cancer Center in Sydney. Uh through that, so thanks for the work that you're doing on this. Um I don't, I don't think we have any questions at this time, I'm not hearing from other councillors, but. I can tell you, you know, obviously with an investment of that size, that is something that we would defer to our budget deliberations typically. Um so, you know, we can, we can go ahead and do that, um and potentially looking at. Um you know, are a multi-year commitment, is that, is that an option that's on the table? I'm seeing Paula nodding her head there with that, okay?
Yeah, I I should have mentioned that uh, this is Amanda, right?
Yes, it is, sorry, yes.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, I don't, I can't see everybody. Uh yeah, I should have mentioned that a lot of donors are doing it over a five-year period.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, thanks for.
Yeah, so if you guys don't have any, sorry, Amanda, y- you know you can reach out to us if you have any questions in the uh. In the, that come up, either to probably through through the foundation, Paula, I guess, or, you know, if you want directly to me.
Okay, well, thank you very much um to all the members of your team for joining us this evening and providing that presentation and the information. It's a, it is a lofty goal, I do, I know what it's like, that last half is gonna be the hardest mile to reach, for sure. But I have a, I have a sneaking suspicion that this is maybe the team to do it, you know, you never know what can happen when you get this kind of. Haves collision going on for such a good cause, it's actually just a little bit scary. Anything is possible, right, so. All right, well, thanks very much for joining us, and uh yeah, I will uh we'll have to take this back to our budget deliberations and. And I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Good.
Okay, we appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks to everybody.
Okay, um all right, so I'll move us on to the next item on our agenda. Um which is um. Our strategic plan, so I know that councillors will have received an email update from. Don, I think you sent it on Friday, there were eight submissions to our RFP, which I have to tell you, I think is an. Extremely good sign that we're gonna have a wonderful piece of work done here. Um and I know Donna suggested that staff will put together a um. Uh you know, kind of a top three, um and but he has shared all of the proposals with council. So I just wanted to kind of talk about the selection process a little bit, so that we'll be ready to make a decision um in in. Due time, um so there is a criteria in the RFP that was uh issued, there is a specific criteria with a rubric in there. Uh that was in the original tender, and I know, you know, and I've already started to take a dive into it, uh but there are eight of them, so it's gonna take a little bit of time. I recognize that, um I I guess I'm I'm wondering from councillors, uh your your uh your preference on making a final selection. Would you like to strike a bit of a committee, take a recommendation maybe back to our end-of-the-month meeting, um or? Uh would you, you know, would you like to just sort of address this generally at our end-of-the-month meeting? So I guess I'm just looking for some discussion um from councillors in terms of how how you'd like to proceed, how involved in the. In the decision-making process, you want to be in terms of getting to decision point, uh because it is a lot of data to review. And so I just open for comments, I guess.
So I guess my, uh if I can, I guess my understanding is that what would happen would be that staff would review them. Use the rubric, come back to us with the top three in an in-camera discussion, because it is a a contract item. Um and then we could kind of review the pros and cons to that, and so that's what I just assumed would happen. Uh and I, and I will say that I'm very fine with that, uh you know. Um if staff felt that they would like some support by us having a committee to do that, that's fine as well. But in my opinion, if if they're okay with them reviewing them, you know, doing doing those rubrics. And coming back to us with the top three, so we could discuss those, uh I would be very comfortable with that.
Okay, great. So other councillors, are we okay with that process? I uh and I guess that that in-camera, I guess in terms of the timing, and maybe this is a question for Dawn, I'm not sure when you think. Um you know, what 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 period you might have enough information gathered that we could meet to discuss. Um if it's, if it's gonna be sooner rather than later, maybe we have a special meeting to to do an in-camera session. Um well, I'll maybe ask you to comment on that, Dawn.
Okay, well, I've gone through uh the majority of them, I'm just about done, I'll probably be done within the next couple of days. And probably get a little bit of feedback from a few other folks, uh a few other senior managers. Uh once that's done, I can send that up, send that information off to you folks, and you guys can review it then. If we wanted to wait to make the final decision during uh an in-camera session during council, that's possible. But like I say, if you wanted to get it going quicker and 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 hold a special council meeting, that's entirely up to yourselves.
Okay.
But but you will, you will require some time to review it yourselves, so it'll all depend on how long that that takes, so.
Yeah. Okay, so do we, so sorry, uh councillor Sean Sampson, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, no, just uh, yeah, I I think, you know, with the the open discussion in an in-camera setting, it is a contract negotiation, so it's gonna go. To an in-camera session, uh I am going to, uh I I've looked at them, you know, a little here and there. Uh I took a sneak peek at that most of them, uh but yeah, I'm not sure if we wanna. You know, discuss openly our top three uh versus the staffs, not that it's gonna make a difference in the decision, but just to see. You know, if. Or how close we would be, uh you know, i- if there was some that were unanimous, or some that were. On all our lists compared to some others or whatever, right? Uh but yeah, I would, I would welcome an open discussion in an in-camera setting, for sure.
Yeah, for sure, for sure, um timing-wise, then um Dawn, if you're gonna be getting some feedback from staff, then perhaps. Perhaps we'll just leave it for um agenda item for our January twenty-fourth meeting. Um because I think, you know, that's probably gonna take till the end of the week, then we're gonna probably want another week to kind of review that, so. So maybe having a meeting sooner is not gonna help us out there, I just wanted to get an understanding of the timing, does it make sense to leave it for January twenty-fourth? In that case, do you think?
Uh yeah, like I say, it's up to you folks, I mean, if you if you want to, that's fine. Um I'll be, yeah, we we'll we'll definitely have something off to you by the end of the week.
Okay, great.
Would would like next Monday be too soon, or nor could, or it doesn't matter to me, I I just mean if. If we wanted to do a special meeting, we might have a bit more time to really get, you know what I mean, to discuss it, just. Um council meeting might be a good time, but depending how much other stuff we got on the go, we don't wanna, we don't necessarily rush that discussion either, right?
Yeah, that's kind of why I wanted to bring it up, is because, you know, I I know that, you know, depending on what, how much we have on the agenda for the January twenty-fourth meeting. And then you're having that discussion afterwards, I I feel like, um you know, there's just so much content to review. Um I think you're bang on, councillor Sampson, that we we may want to have some dedicated time specifically for this.
If we, like, I mean, if we headed by the end of the week, are people comfortable with that on Monday, or is that not enough time to review it, I'm just not sure.
Uh Deputy Warden, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, we have the, we have the, the, we have the proposals right now, so we can review those this week. So really, all we'd need to review over the weekend is is staff's recommendations and their top three, you know, that that piece. So I mean, I would definitely be comfortable, um did we have anything on a list for a bylaw and policy meeting? Like we could maybe tax something, it would just, to make it a bit of a, have something to do on that, if we would meet on Monday night. So A, I would be totally fine to meet on Monday night if we want to do that. Uh I could definitely be prepared for that, and B, we may want to take it on to something else.
Okay, thanks Deputy Warden, um certainly, we've got a list for bylaw and policy, um but I'd have to check in, you know, with, I think. With staff on where that list is at, but um but you know, what we could do right now is maybe candidly plan to for a special meeting. Um for Monday evening, and um you know, Dawn, if anything goes sideways in terms of your consultations with staff and your review. That you're gonna need more time past the end of this week, just maybe let us know and and we can proceed accordingly, okay?
Sure, yeah, that sounds.
Okay, great. Okay. All right, that's great, thanks a lot, everyone, um so then I guess the next item on the agenda is uh. Or I guess maybe I'll ask any further discussion on that, um sorry, I'm skipping along here. Okay, very quiet, so, all right, so correspondence, and this next on our agenda. Um so the first item is correspondence from the Lordways Food Bank. Um and that is a thank you uh for the food bank uh donation, the investment that we made in their organization. Um it's a lovely card, um so very thoughtful of that group to uh to provide that uh that that message of thanks. Um and it is coming from the Lordways Social Action Committee, so, and assigned by Sally on the cat, so. Um that was the first item of correspondence on the agenda. The second item um is another thank you from the St. Peters area Food Bank Society. Um and it it along the lines of a very similar vein, it's from the Food Bank Society, signed by their Chair Sudiki. Um but it does note that um they're requesting a change to who the cheque is made out to, because it looks like we made it out to a name. The St. Peters Bread Bank, which they haven't operated under for a number of years, so um I'm I'm sure Dawn's staff has noted to make that change. Um in for future, for future investments. So thank you to both of those organizations for your kind words, I'm happy that we were able to support them again this year. Councillor Sean Sampson, you had a question?
Yeah, if I could also, while we're while we're doing this, Madam Warden, if I could also acknowledge uh Agnes Boudreaux's email to to our team. Uh and her, and her thank you email on behalf of the Almedan Food Bank, so. Again, I want to thank Agnes for all the work she does, and and all the volunteers that work in all our food banks, not only our Almedan one, but. All the food banks in Richmond County, so just wanted to acknowledge Agnes and thank her for her email, and uh thank all the volunteers in Richmond County.
Thank you very much, councillor Sampson. Okay, and so that wraps up our item on correspondence, the next item on the agenda is councillor Brent Sampson. Regarding electric vehicle charging stations, so over to you, councillor.
So there, there was an announcement, actually, just after I added this the other day, but I think it um. It has more to do with mid-range chargers that that may focus on businesses and so on, but I thought, I know uh. Not this council, a previous council, I've discussed this issue in the past, but it may be time to. Uh ask staff to look into it again as to what funding opportunities may be available. Um and and start the discussion, I I figure this may also come up in our strategic planning, but. Well, we've had a lot of discussion on tourism in the county and and the lack thereof. Um many people with an electric vehicle, they're very much aware, and and often the GPSs are set up within these cars. As to where the charging stations are, so if if we find ourselves in a county without a charging station anywhere. Uh I think they, you know, they're gonna pass right through, so. Possibly this may be something we want to explore, uh ask staff to look into what our options are, what. What costs would be and what what grants or or government funding may be available, and and if this makes sense for us going forward to uh. To look at whether it be one or multiple locations within the county, depending on cost and so on. I'll open the floor to discussion.
I would, I would just like to uh to point out that District One and District Two each have a charging station in their uh. In their location, I'm really surprised that three, four, and five isn't up to speed yet in twenty twenty-one, but.
Actually, there is a charging station in St. Peters.
Is there?
Yes, there is down at the St. Peters town, but to your point, uh councillor Sampson, it's timely, yeah.
I don't believe there's any of the uh the top-grade rapid chargers, though, is there?
I don't, I'm not sure.
There isn't, uh so the only, the only one on the island, I think that's the top-grade rapid charger, is that uh is in Jarmans Island. At the um. And they also set up the one in in Ayrshire, I believe, as well, at the uh. At that location, but the the top rate one is uh is set up in Jarmans Island. However, a little bit out of the way, but it's, yeah, I believe it's a two-to-three-hour charge, and it's at full charge, whereas your. Slow charges, like a ten or eleven-hour charge.
Yeah, but uh like what I was speaking of is, let's say, in monastery, for instance, uh the petrol can there, I believe it's, I don't know, is it twenty minutes? Something like that, like.
That's really fast.
People, yeah, like people that are passing through on their way on a trip aren't necessarily gonna want to wait around two or three hours.
Yeah.
Although, in theory, I guess that's, that's better.
Maybe we want them to do that. Yeah, but I I really do think that's a timely comment, uh and a timely item for our agenda, you know, it's the COP twenty-six conference, just. You know, uh late in late last year, I believe there was a declaration made. Um by, you know, some of the major car dealers in some countries um to try to transition to one-hundred percent. Electric vehicles by, I think it'll be a year where it might have been twenty forty, I'd have to look up the details on that, so it's certainly a trend that's moving that way. And I think that's a great, you know, it's a great consideration for our tourism efforts as well, you're right. Um so I get, so I guess, uh councillor, you're seeking a motion from council to ask staff to investigate funding. Opportunities for the installation of these types of uh chargers?
Yes.
Okay. So would you like to make that motion, then?
I'll make that motion, that staff investigate what funding opportunities may be available. Um and and it for possibly multiple types of chargers, and we could, we could evaluate the whole process from there.
Okay. So we have a motion from councillor Brent Sampson, could I have a second on that motion?
So is the other district without one, I'll second it.
Thank you, Deputy Warden, that's great, all right, any further discussion on that?
Before we go, I don't know if uh um CEO Marshall has anything to add, just because I know this conversation has come up in the past before we were here, but I know. But that was a few years ago, I believe.
We want to get some um uh some ideas uh with respect to costing as well? Do you want to include that in the pause, in the um motion, or do you want to make a separate motion for that?
Well, I think if you're investigating funding opportunities, you need to know the cost, I I would assume, I. Don't wanna, I don't know, do we need to kind of get into that level of detail, or?
I guess to find out what our options are, basically, uh, just because I I honestly have no idea what the costing is on these, and then. As compared to what funding opportunities may be available.
Yeah. So I think the motion was to um investigate funding on um different types, you had mentioned councillor Sampson. Um.
Yes.
Of, yeah, of charging units, okay? Okay, um any further discussion?
Question?
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion's carried. It's great, okay, so the next item on the agenda is the review of checks issued, uh do councillors have any questions for staff? On the list of checks uh issued in December twenty twenty-one?
I I have one quick one, and unfortunately, I I couldn't bring it up, but, and maybe it might have been a typo, just there, there's a check. That seems to be written to the County of Richmond. And I just, it kind of threw me off, because it's, and I'm from the county Richmond, so I didn't know, um I I believe the amount was a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, I'm just taking a quick scan, it's tough to see that December is a busy month.
I do remember seeing that somewhere or other, yeah.
Yeah.
Dawn, could you?
Replenishment of petty cash or something, because usually those are.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, I just, I've never seen it kind of done before, so I didn't know what the.
Yeah, I believe it's just a float, but uh forwarded me off a uh email, and I'll I'll get the exact purpose, I believe it's for a float.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's fine, it, yeah, it was just.
Okay. Any other questions on the list of checks?
Not as much a question, but I I guess a a comment uh, Warden, is, you know, if people are looking at this list of checks that will be published. That that typically they may be looking for sequencing, and that there are some that are redacted for confidentiality reasons, so I think it's probably important that we mention that. Uh because some people, like me, right, look through the list, and I'm looking for number sequencing, it's the accountant in me. And there are a couple that are, you know, there are some that are missing, but they're missing for, you know, we know that they're missing. And and um just to sort of say that, I guess, out loud.
Yeah, no, that's a great point, thank you Deputy Warden. Okay, so any other questions on the review of checks? All right, um so the next item is the review of action items, um. And those again are provided in the agenda package, are there any questions for staff on the uh review of agenda items? Or, excuse me, the review of action items?
Yeah, so for me, uh Madam Warden, I just wanted to uh bring it up to the residents of District One that we're inquiring about uh. The four or five different uh cell uh service providers and. Internet providers that we have checks issued to on a monthly basis, so. Well, I did send a email off to our CEO this morning. So, I did send a email off to our CEO this morning, uh, just so I can, uh, clear that off our, uh, action item list, so just wanna bring that up. So, uh, yep, uh, just let the residents of District One know that, uh, hopefully we will have those answers, uh, soon enough.
Okay. Great, thank you councillor.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the action items? All right, um, so here none, we'll move on to the items added to the agenda. So the first was dog catcher policy, I believe that was, was that you councillor Diggan?
It, it was, so I just, uh, and just, uh, maybe this is to our CEO, I'm not sure, but he can probably shed some light on it. I just, I received a phone call today and I looked through our, our bylaws and so the request I had, I said, or the comment I guess I had was that a person was trying to make a complaint, um, in doing that, they, they for dog catcher, and they didn't want to leave their name, they're willing to leave the civic address of the complaint of where the dogs were and what was happening and what was going on, but they didn't wanna get personally involved because they feared repercussion, I guess. So, um, I guess maybe my question is, um, is it policy or is it mandatory that we, we have to leave our name um, for the dog catcher to, I guess, interact in any? You know, you know, some.
Take action, you mean?
Take action. And if it is, then I guess maybe my second one would be, how do we change that? Because again, you know, some people do wanna remain, I understand the the policy and the information that's required, so that the same person isn't calling over and over again complaining. But, um, I can assure you that the person who called me today is definitely not just your random folks trying to get, you know, a dog lover, a dog owner in trouble. Um, so, yeah, the question is, maybe our CEO, A O knows the answer, or if he can touch base with our dog catcher, is that something that we can look at doing is having a complaint looked at without the person leaving their their name, I guess?
Well, I guess there's, it's, it's, there's more to it than that, obviously, I would, I would dare say that there may be some legal implications on it because the dog calls sometimes can progress into a, into not just a, a visit by the dog catcher, but it may visit, it may, um, in, include legal ramifications, and that, that may be part of the, the reason why that that was in the bylaw itself. Um, we don't have, it's not a dog policy, it's a, uh, it's a dog bylaw. So, um, I mean, we can check, we can review the, uh, the bylaw and maybe get a legal opinion as to, uh, uh, the validity of, of, uh, people, uh, providing their name. I know that with unsightly premise in, in that bylaw, that people do have to do the same. So there may be some legal implication there that, that requires the name to be provided. So, um, perhaps, uh, I mean, we could refer to a policy bylaw, but we could also make a motion and, and I could look at it if, if that's what the council so wishes.
Yeah, I mean, I know we have a, we have a bit of a list going on for policy and bylaw committee. I wonder if it would be simpler just to get a quick, uh, legal opinion on, uh, leaving, you know, uh, removing the requirement to, to provide your name. Um, although I think at the end of the day, we're gonna probably wanna bring even that type of opinion back to policy and bylaw, 'cause I, you know, I think there'd be other, um, you know, implications there as well. Councillor Diggan?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I agree, I, um, you know, I guess I'm at the, uh, I'm, I'm on both sides, I'm, I'm personally outspoken, and I explained that to the person on the phone today. I have no problem telling the other person next door to me, uh, pick up your dog before I have to pick it up kind of deal. But in saying that, then, not everybody, not everybody is, uh, that foregoing and, and some people, you know, are timid and don't wanna, uh, and I guess, you know, we, we have to represent them people as, as well as the ones who are okay to put their name out there. So, yeah, I maybe, uh, maybe, yeah, we can, we can look at it at either bylaw, policy committing, or whatever, whatever works for you folks. I just, I did wanna bring it to everybody's attention and, you know, just let them know that.
Yeah.
And it's, it's several times that I've gotten calls on different outcomes, and the person just doesn't wanna get personally involved because of, you know, the person that the complaint is going against. Um, and, you know, I'm sure living in a rural neighborhood, we can all understand why certain people don't wanna complain about the people next door. But in saying that, um, you know, we, we still have a due diligence to do, just because they don't wanna leave their name on file. Um, I guess by taking care of the issue.
Okay, so maybe, uh, we'll refer to policy and bylaw for further discussion and exploration on that?
Sure, 'cause I, I believe the last time it was looked at or adjusted was maybe two thousand and five.
Okay.
Deputy. I wouldn't mind if, if before we would have that meeting, like, in preparation for that meeting, if perhaps, Don, if you could check to see if it's a requirement or if it's just been our practice. Like, I just scanned it really quick, uh, and I don't see where it's a requirement, so it could just be our practice. And then, but then again, I, but I still would then like to see it go to policy and bylaw because if it's our practice and we deem it to be a, a practice that's applicable, then we should actually look to amend the bylaw to include it, right? So, so I, if, if we could in preparation for that meeting, could, could we find out if it's indeed, if, if it's actually in the bylaw or if it's just our practice?
Yeah, no, I agree, councillor.
Okay, so maybe we could have a two-part on this then. We could ask staff to, uh, inquire with our solicitor to, um, um, to check on the requirement for leaving your name, uh, from a legal perspective. Um, and then we can also refer to policy and bylaw, sound good?
Since we're doing this, since we're doing this, Madam Warden, for this particular, uh, situation, can we also do it, CEO, for, uh, for the Eastern District Plan Commission, 'cause, uh, some people.
Premises, you mean?
Yeah, exactly, right. Uh, some people, like, like the dog situation, some people like to refer to their particular question, but they were either one, you know, they, they want the councillor to put their name on it, which I'm okay with, but some of them don't wanna put their name on the complaint, right? If we can look at that one at the same time, I'd appreciate that.
So, so maybe we'll do a couple of motions here, though, uh, councillor Sampson. I'm thinking, um, maybe we'll start with this one. Um, I mean, unless we, you wanna do, you wanna do both?
Would it, would it be easier to just reach out and find out, like, you know, just the one simple thing where the CEO could reach out and find out the legal requirements on this?
That's right.
You know, like, I mean, I have no problem with going to policy and bylaw as long as we, you know, find out that what the details are ahead of time, but at this point, we'll just answer the first question, then we can deal with it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so I guess first off, I would like to, I'll, I'll make a motion to have our CEO reach out to our, uh, solicitor to find out if, um, if it is part of our, uh, bylaws and what is the requirements that we, we should follow, or what is the recommendations that he would suggest we follow, maybe?
Okay. To leave your name specifically.
Yep.
Okay, so I think the motion is to have the CEO reach out to our lawyer, to, or, to, uh, inquire as to the requirement of leaving your name.
Yep.
When, when reporting, uh, to the dog catcher. Okay, so could I have a second on that motion?
One second.
Okay, that's deputy Warden. Okay, so any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that motion is, or those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, see how the hands go up, so. Um, and I know councillor Sampson, you wanted to also make that inquiry for unsightly premises. Would you like to make a similar type motion at this time?
Yeah, if I could make that motion, yeah, then I have to see you verify with the Eastern District Plan Commission or our solicitor to see if, if that also is, is the case when it comes to unsightly premises.
Okay, so we have a second motion on the table, could I have a second or, on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks councillor Diggan, uh, any further discussion on that item?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, so thanks very much, guys, and I guess it's kind of like, I, I won't say it's asking the same question twice, but it does make sense to do that, them both at the same time, as a very similar type inquiry, so. All right, um, any further discussion then on that item, councillor Diggan, or has that been addressed to your, uh, your original intent?
No, that's great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the next item on the agenda that was added is regarding the accessibility plan correspondence. And, uh, as I mentioned, I had sent, uh, a letter, uh, copied to Ritt County councillors, uh, this morning, maybe midday, um, regarding our accessibility plans. And the minute, the letter was sent to Minister Johns, who is the attorney general. And the reason I sent it to his attention, uh, was because it was his office, well, it was the attorney, office of the attorney general under a previous government, uh, who originally notified us of the extended deadline of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two for us to have our accessibility plans in place. Um, and I will mention that I did see, see that also to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and our local M L A as well. Um, I just wanna clarify, it was not a formal request for an extension. And the timeline that our accessibility committee has been working on is to have the plans completed on time. Um, however, that timeline is very much based on if nothing goes wrong and nothing goes off track. And I think what's happened in December alone, uh, with the situation with COVID has definitely thrown some cold water on our, uh, on our optimism in terms of counting on nothing going off track. So the, the, the letter really was to encourage government to consider that as an overall, uh, uh, extension that they might grant across the province to give municipalities a little bit more time um, to get those accessibility plans done. Um, particularly, uh, in our case, where we have public consultation that we want to, uh, we wanna conduct. Um, so, you know, given COVID, whether we thought it, I, you know, at this point, I thought it was just wise, especially after some correspondence between, um, Laurier, uh, and the CEO, Don, and, and myself on the matter. Um, and so I figured it was wise to shoot that type of a request off to the minister, or I guess request for consideration. Um, and I think, I just wanna mention that our last meeting, um, our, our initial kickoff meeting, I should say, with the consultants, which happened on Friday afternoon. Um, you know, there were members of our committee who lost internet during the call, uh, lost power in the snowstorm. I think the consultants were pretty impressed with how adaptable we were, juggling phone and using generators to try to get back online, or your phone, or whatever the heck it was. But the bottom line is, is that, um, it really was a, a lesson in anything can happen. So we're just, uh, like, you know, at that point, wondering if maybe we could be looking at getting some leeway on that. Um, you know, uh, we're, we're adaptable, but we're not miracle workers. Um, so that letter has gone off to the, to the minister. Um, I did send a copy also to NSFM, just to let them know that this has been, you know, kind of surfacing to our minds. Uh, and, uh, and the response I got back from them was that, you know, like, they're, they're hearing that other municipalities are in the same boat. Um, but as of yet, have they haven't, you know, ours was the first piece of formal correspondence they had seen on it. Um, so, uh, so no action really required on that, I just wanted to provide some context to councillors on why that letter was sent. Um, and maybe just, I'll sneak in a quick little update because, um, we do have consultants selected, the successful consultants on our project, uh, just to do the accessibility plans for both the county and the village. Our Intelligent Futures and Level Playing Field, it's a collaboration between the two. Um, they, they recently developed the accessibility plan for the County of Kings, and so they've got some really great, um, local relevant experience. It's a pretty dynamic team, includes planning and engagement experts, um, as well as a person with, uh, both universal design expertise and a lived experience, uh, who would provide strategic direction. And, and the whole, I think, proposal, that whole kickoff meeting really demonstrated capacity and passion. So stay tuned for, for more formal updates and consultations on that. So, so any questions from councillors up on that? I, I just wanted to give you a little context as to why that letter, uh, appeared in your inbox this morning. So, okay. Quite a bunch, all right. So next item on our agenda is a fifteen-minute question, um, which is not restricted to items on the agenda. And so we do have a phone and number. Um, the number is one, seven, seven, eight, nine, zero, seven, two, zero, seven, one. Um, and of course, people who are signed in are also welcome to ask questions, uh, through the chat. So we'll just give that a minute to let folks call in if they so choose. All right, it's quiet, so we've on, I'll just do a quick check and, uh, is there anything in the, in the chat or any?
No.
Folks waiting?
Okay.
There are no questions.
All right, perfect, okay. All right, well, I guess it's, uh, it's everybody kind of getting their feet wet after a Christmas break, so, uh, so I can make for a bit of a shorter meeting and, uh, and a quieter evening, for sure. Um, I don't believe we have any items for in-camera at this time, so we can, uh, forego that item on the agenda. And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Let me make that motion.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Do I have a second, or please?
Second motion.
Thanks councillor Diggan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, thanks so much, everyone, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thanks, guys.
Night, everyone.
Okay.
Night, everyone.